Mr. Mayor, check your email.
And your life.
Hasn't come in yet.
Your life, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to our remote council meeting. It's going to be a little different today. We're trying this new procedure out. Hopefully, it'll go smoothly. Basically, what will happen is, in the past, you heard and saw me. You heard some of the councillors, but you never saw them, I don't believe, when they were talking. This time, when councillors or anybody else talks, you will be able to see and hear them. That's the basic difference. Okay. We are going to start with the public question period. And there was one question submitted in advance of the meeting. I'll paraphrase it rather than reading the whole thing. It was submitted by Morten Grossdorn. And the question was, basically, on the agenda, you are purchasing a hybrid utility vehicle. Why isn't Hampstead in the forefront? Why are we following everybody? Why aren't we getting an electric vehicle? Let's go all the way. So, the answer is very simple. The vehicle is, let me read the proper name. The vehicle is a Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Hybrid. I'm sure most of you have seen our new Explorer Public Security Cars, SUVs. They're very good. They are packed with all kinds of important emergency equipment in them. They have iPads so that they can do, amongst other things, they know if somebody has gotten overnight parking permission right up to the minute. So, there's a whole bunch of good things in these vehicles. But there are a number of requirements for the vehicles, so we can't just take any SUV. And we investigated all the electric SUVs on the market. None of them met our requirements. So, the short answer is, this vehicle, this Ford, this Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Hybrid was the only one that met our requirements. So, we're being as green as we possibly can. We are gradually going to more and more either hybrid or electric vehicles. And that's the answer to that. Now, I'm into the questions and answers that are being submitted while the meeting goes on. And the first question is really long, and I can't see the whole thing on my screen, but apparently councillor Goldwax can. So councillor Goldwax will now read the question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, there's actually three questions that were published. First question came in from Catherine Doucette. "I received an email on Monday, February 22, with one topic being redevelopment of buildings on Coates St Luke Road. This email contained a letter from the mayor on this topic, as well as links to the four reports that residents of Hampstead have been anticipating for a while. Number one, urban planning, the BC2 report. Two, traffic studies, CIMA Plus. Three, conclusions, CIMA Plus. And four, tax revenue increase, the Altus Group report. I now have access to these reports, but I've not been able to find them on the Town of Hampstead website. Please indicate where they are located, as I've looked and I have been unable to find them. If they are there, they should be more obvious to residents who do not receive the Hampstead newsletters and not buried somewhere. If they are not there, why are they not there?" That is her question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. The answer is that we sent it out by the electronic newsletter just to make it even more apparent, in case anyone missed it on our website. But on our website, there is a banner along the top, a big banner, and it moves every five seconds. There are three different banners. The first one and every third one says redevelopment of Coates St Luke Road, or something like that, and something about InfoEC. All you have to do is click on that banner when it's there, and that will take you to the same message that we sent out electronically. At the bottom of the message are the links to all the reports. If you want to hold on one second, I'm going to test it right this minute on my desktop. I'm using three different machines here. So, give me a second. Okay, I just did what I told you. Depending on the speed of your computer, it takes a little time. But at the bottom of that message, the same one you read in the electronic newsletter, there's a link to the BC2 report. And I just clicked on it, and the BC2 report, whatever number of pages it is, are right there. Since I'm on the English side of the website, it's in English. If you're on the French side, it's in French. After the BC2 report comes the CIMA Plus. For CIMA Plus, we have, on the English side, only the summary. Well, no, sorry, on both sides, we have the summary. The summary is available in both English and French. It's only a page and a half. The entire report is available in French. And the third one is the Altus Report, again, on the English side. It'll come up in English. On the French side, it'll come up in French. I just tried it, at least the first link. I guarantee you, it works. Okay, what's the next question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next question is coming from Alana Hirsch. This is a lengthy question, so I'm going to read it. "To all members of the Hampstead City Council, in the last year, since the residents of Hampstead voted in referendum to block the development of a large building, Coates St Luke Road, I've remained relatively quiet. I attended every council meeting, first in person and now virtually, and listened with great sadness as the mayor and some council members continue to profit, to put profit over people. I appreciate the input from the other council members who have spoken out and try to understand the plight of the tenants, but sadly, the majority of you don't. I ask each and every one of you to consider for just a few moments how you would react and move forward if your personal situation was different. Imagine if you would, if you had to leave your current home within three-month deadline. You'd have to find a new place to live, pack up your belongings, arrange movers, and make sure your children are registered for new schools, all the while working full-time or going to school. It might be fairly easy for you, given your financial means, even during global pandemic. Now, think of how the picture would be very different if you were living paycheck to paycheck and had little savings, were a single parent with three children, were elderly with minimal supports, or confined to a wheelchair. Or, what would you, if you were my situation, an exhausted frontline social worker who has worked countless hours per week overtime in addition to my regular shifts for one year straight without any time off, because I'm committed to helping children and teenagers under the youth protection and supporting coworkers? What if you were one of us? Would it be so easy to find a new place to live and move? Probably not. So, as you move forward and make your decisions that affect people, please keep in mind that we take pride in our homes, and our homes are not falling apart, as the mayor continues to talk about. I can, however, tell you what they are. They are the place where people hug and tuck their children in at night. They are the place, I'm going to, it goes on, hang on. "Tuck their children at night." "The place where neighbours buy groceries for each other. A place where people greet each others with smile, even behind masks. And a place where people care about one another. And a place where I can safely lay my head down at night, knowing I did the best I can every day to help so many vulnerable and at-risk children to get through this pandemic. Every single time the mayor speaks about Coates St Luke Road, invokes fear in every resident of the apartment buildings. Every single time he attempts to justify making people leave their homes, it creates anger and sadness. And every time he sends out his message filled with half-truths, it reminds us that he is not the mayor for all people. He is just a person who cares about himself and knows that we'll never have to wonder and then worry, and then worry where they could be or how they will survive with three months' notice. I guess in the end, your choices lay where your own personal priorities rest. Deciding if people being treated with kindness and fairness matters more than money and profit. My question is the following." Excuse me, I'm just clearing my throat. "If and when bylaws in the Town of Hampstead are changed to allow for larger buildings along Coates St Luke Road, would members of council consider putting a consideration into the bylaw to ensure that tenants are treated fairly and compensated fairly? My hope is that this portion could be done with the input of actual tenants to reflect their realities. I would be proud to take part in these discussions as a voice for the tenants. Please remember that any decisions you make could dramatically change their lives, and in most cases, especially for those living currently in Coates St Luke Road. My hope, it is that it is for the better and not to cause people to endure more suffering and hardship. Thank you."
Okay. I thank you for that question, and I sympathize. And as some of your neighbours in those buildings have written, "I am a mayor who cares about all residents, regardless of where they live. I have helped dwellers in apartment buildings numerous times over the past 16 years." So, any suggestion that I do not care about tenants just as much as homeowners is totally false. And it's false, as stated in a number of emails and testimonials that I've got from apartment dwellers. So, let's be clear about that. Secondly, you talk about half-truths. Well, I find that a bit rich. In your very long question, you talk about three months to move out. Well, the actual rental board gives you a minimum of 12 months. And in this particular case, the developers extended it to, I believe, at least 17 months, if not more. So, please, let's not talk about three months. It's simply a falsehood. You, and speaking of falsehoods, you yourself admitted at a council meeting about a year ago, when I talked about the CIMA Plus report, and I said that traffic increases would be minimal, 1% to 7%. You, and somebody sitting beside you, spoke up from the audience, you laughed. And you said, "We know, but it was good marketing." And my response was, "You've just admitted that you lied." Now, that's the fact. I'm a politician who will state facts, truth. And that meeting was recorded by the press. They were there. You can't deny it. And you can't deny that if somebody wants to demolish a building, the rental board regulations require at least 12 months. And you can't deny that the developers of the proposed building were offering much more than that. They were also offering to deal with building managers, I think a couple of them, who managed something like, I remember, an awful lot of apartment buildings in the area. And they were willing to give tenants in their buildings first choice whenever one became available. And these were buildings with apartments in the same price range as yours, at least close to it. So, both the developers of the proposed project were willing to treat tenants very, very fairly. The rental board regulations treat tenants fairly. You're asking if the council can set up some kind of committee to make requirements. Well, the requirements dealing with those types of situations belong to the rental board. It's the Quebec government that sets these rules, that establishes the rental board, the Regie, I forget the exact name. And they manage all these types of issues. But on top of it, I think what you will find is that developers usually want people to leave sooner rather than later. And just like the developers, in the case of the particular project that people rejected, they didn't offer the minimum required by the rental board. They went well beyond that. And on top of that, I can tell you that this council did speak to developers. I spoke to them, and different councillors spoke to them. And we said, "In particular, in addition to doing everything you're doing, there's one resident who's in a wheelchair, and we especially want her taken care of." And the owner, who lives, the main owner, who lives in Toronto, did deal with her directly, and her social worker, and they were working out a solution that would have left her much, much better off than she is today. Now, you can disagree with all that. My opinion, your opinion, we can have different opinions, but that's what I believe. And then the referendum came, the project was shut down, and that was the end of that. No, I don't think that tenants are going to be in a bad position because Coates St Luke Road will be developed. I think most tenants do not live very long-term in that particular building. Out of about 26 apartments, there were seven, or maybe I'm getting confused. There was a very small minority that had lived there more than, I think, seven years. Most of them were relatively short-term. And being paid more than what is required, having moving expenses covered, having priority options on new apartments that would have become available, having 17 months to move out is not at all unreasonable. The developers were very generous, and I appreciate it. And the council members were very caring. And we wanted, especially your most vulnerable resident, taken care of. But it was shot down by a referendum that was partially won because of false statements, false misleading billboards, and so on and so forth. I make no apologies for pushing this project. Now, I have one more thing that is very important. You are making it sound like part of the council is on your side. They don't want development. Well, that is not true. I would like any councillor, right now, at this meeting, who wants no development in Coates St Luke Road, no buildings torn down. I want to hear from them right now. I'm giving them the floor. Go ahead, tell me, who on this council wants no development on Coates St Luke Road?
Bill, I'll take the floor on this one. We want development, okay. We want development, but at the same time, we want fair and equitable development. So, I think what she's saying is that we have to watch out for these residents. And I think it works for our benefit. I think it works for the residents' benefit. And I think it works for the developers' benefit if we find a win-win situation. And I think the reason we wound up with a failed referendum was because we didn't sit and listen, or at least the developers, at the end of the day, didn't sit and listen to the needs of the residents. If we find a win-win situation, if we find something that works, and we find something that can help the residents, then you're not going to wind up with a whole bunch of residents who are pissed off, who do register and do a referendum, and then wind up having the whole thing fail. I think we have to work with the people as stakeholders. So, we're not against development, but we're for development in a fair and equitable way for everybody, including the homeowners on Queen Mary and Cressy and the residents, the renters along Coates St Luke Road.
Okay, thank you very much, and so am I. I can agree with every word you said. I'm for a development that's fair, that takes care of the people on Coates St Luke Road as much as possible, that takes into consideration the people behind those new buildings that will go up. But you also said you want to see development. And any development means that those residents on Coates St Luke Road will have to leave. Is there anyone else who wants to express their view about whether or not they are for development, which will force residents on Coates St Luke Road to leave?
I just want to say that it's not necessarily a one-to-one ratio. There are vacant buildings, there are lots that are empty. And at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, look, everyone will have their opinion, but for you to continually preach that this referendum was won on falsehoods and lies is just disrespectful to your residents. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, but you're also for development, which means residents will have to leave their apartments.
It's a balance. We can't tell developers what they can or can't do. If somebody wants to take a three-story building, knock it down, and put up a three-story building, it's their prerogative. I think the town is in a position where we should definitely be encouraging development, gentrification, densification, to a certain extent, but it's a balance. It's not always a yes or no. It's a compromise. It's finding the right ratio. To say, "Do you want developments, meaning buildings are torn down and people are put in the streets", is not just a black-and-white statement. And it's not fair to put us in a corner to try and pit us against each other.
Actually, I'm addressing the issue of someone who's concerned about losing her apartment. And I've made the point, which is being backed up by those who are talking so far in council, that there is nobody who is not in favour of some development. The only disagreement may be on the size. That's it.
I think it's unfair to characterize what Beth is saying as being against development. She didn't say we want council to think about not doing any development at all. She said she wants it, what I understood, is she wants it in a way that's fair. She wants it in a way where people are taken care of, where there isn't a short-term. I mean, I don't know what the law is. If it's three months, then it's clearly outrageous. But I'm sure we can come to some kind of arrangement where we sit with the residents, we have to talk to the residents and say, "What is it that you guys need?" In the same way that we dealt with the residents, or tried to deal with the residents in the past, or some of us did. I think we need to be able to sit with them and say, "Okay, what works? How does this work? What works for you guys? How can we help this along?" And I think that's better, not only for them, but it's also better for the developers to not wind up with an angry bunch of people that we're imposing things on, but to say, "We're working with people together. Let's figure this out together."
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing? And I'm not going to repeat what councillor Edery and councillor Buttoning said, but yes, I am also for development and being fair and equitable. At the end of the day, we're a council to govern and put in, let's say, bylaws, put in laws, put in policies and procedures as a town. But at the end of the day, we are serving our residents, and these are their homes, whether it's an apartment, their home, their land, their park. It's still their home. They're paying taxes for it. They own it. And we have the legal right as a council to impose rules and laws and bylaws. But we also have to look, as we say, and has been said, a fair balance, because it is still their homes and their lives, which we will be affecting, whether it be positively or negatively.
You know, the thing is councillor Goldwax, I agree with you, but at the same time, the building owners, the property owners, are also our responsibility as well. So, it's once again, finding a balance on both sides of the table. The issue is, and you know, to answer Beth's question and to follow up on what Jack Edery was saying, councillor Edery was saying, "Do we have the ability", and it's more of a legal question than anything. I don't know that we have the answer right now. "Do we have the ability to put into our bylaw a stipulation on what a compensation package should look like for residents? The relationship between tenants and landlords is governed by the Regie de Logement. I don't know whether we have that authority within our purview to make that a requirement towards developers and property owners. It's something to look into. On the flip side of things, one of the requirements in our demolition bylaw is to have a tenant relocation plan. But we don't actually detail what is required in a tenant relocation plan. Maybe we need to make sure that that's more elaborate and that's, you know, detailed properly to at least, if we can't, you know, detail the compensation requirements, make sure that the housing and the relocation requirements are well laid out so that developers and property owners know what they're getting themselves into."
Okay.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, quickly, that everybody is for development with the proper consulting the resident. That's what they're saying. I didn't hear anyone saying that they're against, they're all for redevelopment, redevelopment of Coates St Luke Road with the proper procedure. Is that right? Fair assessment?
I think that is right, and that is the point I was trying to make.
That's it. So, what is the argument?
I'd just like to add.
The procedure.
I share the view of every single council member who spoke this evening. But I think if I properly understood the comments, I think related to Miss Hirsch, is that she really does not want to lose her residence, where she is now. And on that point, if there, since everyone is truly in favour of development, but with a balance, she will have to understand that if there is development, she will be uprooted from her home. Otherwise, there cannot be a development of the project based upon a balance with which I agree with councillor Buttoning. So, if I understood what she said, and she seemed to repeat it several times, that she values and appreciates her present residents, any development will undoubtedly give rise to her having to move. That does not mean that we cannot assist and be considerate and show interest for their wellbeing. But they must understand that if there is development, the likelihood is that there will be, the tenants will have to move. Otherwise, how can you develop the building?
But I'm sorry, if I can just add one thing, and I hope I'm not shooting myself in the foot and taking the other side of the table here for a second. But it's important to note that the city has certain obligations and requirements. But at the end of the day, a tenant and a landlord have their own relationship that a city doesn't get involved in. As much as the tenants may love their home and want to stay there forever, the city cannot obligate the landlord to keep a tenant in place. A landlord has the opportunity, whether it's development or not, a landlord could apply for subdivision permits, for major renovation permits. They could evict because they want to put a dependent in the unit. They could want to do major renovations to specific units. All that to say is that the city only has so much latitude in what our abilities are to control the tenant-landlord relationship. And at the end of the day, development may or may not occur, but it doesn't necessarily, development or no development, guarantee somebody that is renting an apartment have the ability to stay there for life. That's a...
100% correct. Councillor Buttoning witnessed the example of the building where all the tenants left at Coates St Luke Road in Glenmore.
Yeah, okay. So, if I can kind of wrap this up, I think councillor Schaefer made the point quite clearly that at the end of the day, if there is any development of any size buildings, tenants do have to leave. Now, I also heard some of the councillors saying that we should see if there's anything we can do to make sure the tenants are treated fairly. And as I mentioned, that no one has done more for tenants in Hampstead over the last 16 years than I have. So, of course, I want to do what's in the best interest of the tenants, but not to the extent of saying there will be no development on Coates St Luke Road. That I will never agree to. And nobody on council is prepared to agree to that. But are there things that we can do to ensure that, as much as possible, as much as legally possible, are there things we can do to encourage or make sure that people who want to demolish a building and redevelop it do provide reasonable compensation, reasonable timeframes, and so on? Maybe even, if it's legal, maybe even beyond what the rental board requires. I don't know. I don't know if we can do these things, but I will certainly be in favour if we can. And I've been thinking about a lot of things along this line. So, as somebody said, it should be win-win. Yes, I think it should be win-win. And I do think it will really be win-win for the vast majority of both tenants and homeowners. That's what I believe. I'm going to keep talking about this. You've already seen my views, and you'll keep hearing more of my views as we go forward. But this is not against tenants. We are all sympathetic. We were last time. We did, behind the scenes, speak to developers. And those developers went way above and beyond the minimum requirements. I don't want to repeat it all again, but they did. And part of the reason they did is because a number of us spoke to them and asked them to do that. Okay, next question.
Next question. 804 came in as the meeting started, but obviously, as it started, I'm going to dismiss that question. The next question is combining, it looks like it's Mrs. Hirsch who's saying, "Could you please answer my question? I can deny that it is 12 months because it is three months. Please just answer my question and stop trying to attack me."
All right. That's Mrs. Hirsch. I'll answer that. She can check, I can check. We will find out. But in the case of the demolition, as was the case over there, it's not three months or 12 months. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. We'll find out. But certainly, in that particular case, they were offered well more than 12 months.
Okay. The next question was combined. It was Adriana Decker, Dr. Decker stating, "You are not answering Mrs. Hirsch's question. Could you please answer it?" That came in at 8:20.
Thank you. I believe I answered it next.
The next one is coming from anonymous. "Mr. Mayor, you are ignoring the fact", this came at 8:22, sorry. "Mr. Mayor, you are ignoring the fact that the..." Mr. Mayor, you are ignoring the fact that the vast majority of residents on Cozen Luke Road do not want to move out. And there was a referendum that was easily won. Stop pretending that a majority wanted something else.
I believe I've addressed that as well.
Okay, and so far, I will say the last question, unless something else comes in, coming from anonymous again, and it's in quotes, no one has done more for tenants in sixteen years than I have? Dot 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 Trump much?
As I said, I can back up my statement. Okay, that seems.
That's the last question, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
I thank everybody. I thank the councillors who spoke as well. And and now let me just get this up here.
Adoption of the agenda, but there's a modification, please.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so before we adopt the agenda, I know Councillor Goldwax wants to have an addition, propose an addition. So proposed by Councillor Goldwax.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add the resolution numbered eight point one eight, eight eighteen. Request to authorize two minor exemptions to the zoning bylaw one zero zero one dash two for detached single family dwelling located eleven Merton Crescent, lot number two million and eighty-eight eight hundred seventy-six, zone RA one. Zoning bylaw one zero zero one dash two SPA IP bylaw number seven seven five and bylaw concerning minor exemptions number ten thirteen. So that's the item being added with subsequent.
Thank you. Would someone please second that?
I will.
Councillor Schaefer is seconding it. Anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed. And that brings us to adoption of the modified agenda. Okay, so this is about the modified agenda. A motion of councillor. Goldwax, seconded by Councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the agenda is just modified of the regular meeting is hereby adopted. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to the departmental monthly reports. And we'll start with Community Services, Councillor Wigginsburg.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to know that there are people here this evening. Once again, my report is going to be very, very short because of COVID nineteen. So everything is still either online or just on hold or canceled because of COVID eighteen, including our hockey program, which has been canceled for the season. We are going ahead with trying to semi-make plans for different activities with the with the knowledge that they may not be able to go forward. We're going ahead with looking to hire people for the pool and tennis and camp with the knowledge that some of this may not be able to go completely forward or have a different, might be more like last summer, but we're all just waiting to see what happens. So just everybody be patient. The only new thing that has come up is on March twenty-first at ten thirty in the morning is an online class for anybody who would like. I think it'll be a lot of kids, is the slime workshop. So if anybody's interested in that, it is an online class. And otherwise, everything's on hold. I just want to remind everybody to continue, stay safe. The vaccine is, seems to be coming out more for more and more people. So I hope anybody who is able to get it will be getting it, not just to protect themselves, but to protect others. But irrelevant of the vaccine or not, I ask everybody to continue to wear your mask, keep your distance and keep washing your hands because that is still the best way to keep yourself safe. And on that note, I wish everybody well and I hope they have a good month coming up.
Thank you very much. And on that note, I will just mention that it just came out this morning in Montreal. If you are seventy or over, you can now book your appointments to get a vaccine shot. And so I encourage people to do so. My wife and I are getting our shots next week. We booked it this morning. And most of our friends, they've also booked their shots. There's absolutely no reason not to get the shot. I'm told, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I am told that when you get your shot, you get an appointment for a second one, probably three months later.
That's correct. They send it to you.
Yeah. So that, so so please, those of you who are seventy or over, do book your appointments. This morning, there was lots of availability right here in the Carrie Square. You can choose your location. I know some people who booked other locations and got even faster appointments than my wife and I did for next week.
Mr. Mayor, also, just, I believe what I heard is also that if you're sixty years old and over and you're a caretaker for somebody that's over eighty, I believe you're eligible as well now.
If you, it used to be seventy and over and a caretaker.
Now it's sixty.
Change a minute by minute. Be right. Okay, we'll move on then to Councillor Eddery and Finance.
Okay. All right, so there, Finance. We we are preparing a two point four million loan bylaw for the new Public Works building and for long-term roadwork. Tonight, we're paying down seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars on a loan bylaw. So it's basically an accelerated repayment of debt. It frees up cash. Just to reiterate, the tax payments have been delayed by three months. So all residents are given an extra three months to make their first and second payments. The first one is due May eighteenth and the second one is now due August sixteenth. Just to give you an update on our park fund. Our park fund with stuff that's currently in the pipeline is at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that accounts for also, and they're eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand that we're spending this year, seven hundred and eighty-two of which, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand of which is to totally rebuild the tennis courts and the likes. Also, just to let you know, there's a new declaration of disclosure on information regarding related parties form. It's going to be coming out for the councillors that we're going to have to sign in order to state whether or not we're related to any parties that are doing business with the town. And then just to give you an update on the Public Works Yard reorganization. So we're working with that currently to subdivide the the Public Works Yard into three parts. One part is going to be sold to development for townhouses. A center part is going to be a green space. And the sale of the property is going to generate funds to build a new public works building, storage building on the remaining lot yard. So that's coming along. And that's about it for for me. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you, Councillor Eddery. And we move on to Councillor El Fassi. And we have a new tennis report in our package. So Councillor El Fassi on tennis. Voice to teaching development, as you wish.
I would just make one quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the floor. Quick note on the strategic development, following what Jack just talked about, the Public Works Yard, where we're going to be soon looking into some beautiful project there and hopefully we'll see this happening in this mandate. Well, I'm not sure if that will happen, but hopefully so. And it's all good news. So that's at least if I, if if there is any part on the strategic development on that on that issue. On the tennis, on the tennis, actually, there is news. The applications for summer employment are still open right now. So people are can still go ahead and pick up the the application form from the website or or call the recreation and get informed for all kind of positions on the tennis program. We also, on the operations side, the there was a recommendation for maintenance contract that was submitted and approved. And we're still with the company called Matchpoint, that they've been servicing Hampstead for the last twenty years or more. And they will be back again. And we were actually last year, one of the few courts that they were ready before the government allowed us to really open the courts for only singles and from the same, with all the restrictions with COVID at the time. So that's with the with the operation. On the PTI that Jack mentioned before, where the investment that the the major investment that we're going to be putting on on the tennis courts, which is the whole, a new irrigation system and total brand-new tennis lights with a new infrastructure of the lights. So we actually hired a consultant by the name of Mr. Fred Polley. Mr. Polley is very well-known in the community of the tennis all around the island of Montreal. And he's been doing a lot of projects like this. And Mr. Polley works together right now with our Michel Richard, that they will be coming up very soon, actually, for a tender document where we will be going out for a tender for this two major project, which is the irrigation of the tennis courts and the new tennis lights. As Jack mentioned before, we're we're talking about close to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Leon, it's not just irrigation. You're, we're rebuilding the entire tennis court.
Yeah, yeah, you can call it that. That it's it's actually the irrigation. What do you mean building, rebuilding?
Rebuilding the core.
When you, when you go underneath, you have to redo it, obviously. But yeah, it's the same thing. But I agree. Bottom line here, it's a major, major investment. Right, because you have to dig everything out.
Yeah.
And you're right. So that is good news for all the tennis community. And and we will hopefully see a little bit of a investment on the reception area, where we're looking into some ideas, not major, big intake. We actually had a couple of architects looking at it. And soon we will see what they're going to come up with. And my last item will be just a timetable that we're, we, I have in front of me, where sometimes this month we will have the call for tender ready. And by May, our, the recommendation will come to council. And hopefully by June, we will be awarding the project, the contract to whoever will win the contract, the project. We are also planning to be ready to do the work for the end of the season, which is late September, sometimes in October. And so the work will be completed, almost completed, before the winter comes of twenty twenty-one. So this means that by April to May twenty twenty-two, we will be a, we will be playing in a brand-new, state-of-the-art Hampstead tennis courts that every one of us and all the residents should be proud to have. And I'm sure the membership will 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 go bazook. And hopefully, I'm sure that many people would then come and and check out our courts because no questions, it will be maybe the nicest in Canada. So that's about my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wish a good month to everybody and from the resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor El Fassi and Councillor Goldwax.
Thank you very much. I just want to make my, my one to, yeah, okay. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and welcome everyone to the meeting. So I'll just talk about a couple of portfolios for Public Works. First and foremost, obviously, snow and its operations. We've had two major snowfalls that happened in the end of January, February, totaling close to fifty centimeters for two of them. Of course, now as we head into March, we head into the major temperature fluctuations, which we saw in today and then tonight and tomorrow, where we go to a very warm, to a very, very cold very quickly. So you're going to get a buildup of ice and then water and then ice and then water. So Public Works is on top of this as best we can to clear drains and trenches and make sure there's enough flow to get rid of the water on the streets. We received, we're waiting to receive the report from AquaData. So once I get that, it will be submitted to Public Works and the town so we can review that. As Councillor Eddery and and Councillor El Fassi have talked about, the Public Works Yard reorganization and the sale obviously does affect the Public Works operations. And we are in the midst of organizing our operations and streamlining certain equipment so that we can accommodate the smaller lot and to accommodate this beautiful residential development. As for sewer lines, Havre Stock and Glenmore seems to be a problematic area which we're aware of. And we're working on the solutions to get it re, cleaned out properly and reevaluated when it's done. Major lamppost lighting issues on Cressy and Glenmore, that whole area, were were finally repaired. Of course, due to the cold weather, snow and finding buried lines, it's a little bit difficult, but finally that is done. And as the spring comes along, different plans and different options we'll find to make sure to address other lighting areas of the town. That is for Public Works. For IT, we are waiting for our audit report for our IT operations. As I reported last time, we were, there was an attack on our servers, which again, like I said, none of the private or secure data from residents or the town was leaked nor held ransom. So again, kudos to Terry for keeping that, working diligently to protect everything. As well, he is, and his team are working on fine-tuning the My Hampstead website, which will eventually give way to the ability to renew a permit for parking, renew your dog license, get a permit online for building inspections. So a lot of the the items that you're able to do by phone, you're now able to, will be able to do online as we're moving towards a more of an online platform. So again, congratulations to to Terry on that department. And for my last portfolio, IT, it's been already talked about with the vaccines. As, just want to share with everyone, as of last Friday, so as of the end of February, all private seniors residences and public CHSLDs, every single resident who who requested the vaccine have received the vaccine. So RCS, which is the CS Centre West, has confirmed to me that all the residences have been vaccinated, including the Waldorf finally received their vaccine this week on the past February twenty-third. The magic day for the second dose was the ninety day. From what I understand, today, I was confirmed by Sante Public that it's now down to eighty-four days is when they, when they administer a second dose. But as we know, things change almost daily. As for the new variant, it is very prevalent in Montreal. It's been confirmed to me. And unfortunately, with the new variant, the symptoms are very similar to a common cold. So just a sniffle or runny nose or just a sore throat. Although people will say that's just a cold, my suggestion, get yourself tested because you don't know where somebody, where you've been and who you've been with. And they could have been an asymptomatic carrier of the new variant. So again, you dial eight one one and you can get yourself tested very quickly at multiple test centers. Starting today, as as the the mayor has talked about, that the the platform has opened up for the vaccines. For RCS, which is Centre West, it is the Carrie Square. For everyone to understand, that is that the door facing where Ernie and Ellie used to be, facing Visina is the entrance. So when you do get your appointment, that's where the door, you go in. And if anybody wants to, if anybody wants to call or go online, if you go online, the link is portal, P O R T A L three, the number three, click, appoint, click sante.ca. So again, portalthree.clicsante.ca or you can call five one four six four 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 five four five four five. Appointments are being given out relatively quickly, as the mayor pointed out. And I urge everyone who has the opportunity, seventy and up, to get themselves vaccinated. And my guess in a couple of weeks, they're going to bring that 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 minimum age down to sixty and then fifty. So I urge everyone to get themselves vaccinated, stay safe, wash hands and wear a mask. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor. Thank you very much, Councilor Goldwax, but I have a question for you.
Yes.
Since you're obviously very up on all these things. Are we actually required to go to the vaccination center closest to us? Because when I went on this morning, it asked me to choose a center, and there were many choices. I did choose the Carrie Square, and my postal code was there. So maybe had I chosen something else, they wouldn't have allowed me. I don't know.
You're not obliged to go to to an outside, you're not obliged to go only go to RCS. Obviously, for 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 comfort, ease, and convenience, the Carrie Square is quite central to our constituents and, you know, even outside our constituency, whether they have family members in Coates and Luke or in NDG or in Westmount. You know, it is close by, it is quite large, and it's quite accommodating. Again, if you're able to get an appointment, let's say, a week, you know, a couple of days earlier at another location that is just outside the Carrie, that's fine. But again, as you, the most important thing is when you click on your the website, or if you give your postal code, they will give you some areas that are giving you appointment options closest to you. So again, it works out to.
If I could just intervene, Mr. Mayor. If you live west of St. Lawrence Boulevard and you want an earlier appointment, let's say, if you have an appointment in one week and you want an appointment this week, you can choose to go to Palais de Congrès and and have your injection this week.
Right.
Palais de Congrès is a week ahead of the Carrie Square.
Yes, that was the case this morning, because we spoke to some friends who were booking. Some of them lived downtown and wanted to go to Palais de Congrès, and yes, they got earlier appointments doing it.
Just it's ease and and ease and availability. So some people may say, I'll wait another week, but it's close by rather than running all the way downtown. So it just depends on each individual.
Yes, that's what we did. We decided we can wait one more week. But okay, moving on, we get the Councilor Buttoning.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just have echo here, so hopefully everybody mutes themselves. So what's not new is our pool is still empty. That being said, with the fluctuating temperatures we had this weekend, we installed temporary pools in front of all your driveways. That being said, our Public Works Department is working very hard to clear all the snow and ice, and Councilor Goldwax can definitely attest to that. In all seriousness, Councilor Goldwax covered a lot of the things I want to talk about with information technology. That being said, we still do encourage our residents to follow us on social media, Facebook and Twitter, where we continue and Instagram now, where we continue to update on news and events and information, as well as subscribe to the My.Hampstead portal, where you can interact with the city flag issues, ask questions, pay for your permits, ask for dog licenses and so forth. There was a employee who had an infected laptop, and there was a virus that went off in that laptop. Thankfully, we were able to contain that. There was no damage outside of that specific portal. Additionally, the the urban plan, not the urban plan, the Information Technology Division of the city has been educating our employees and the elected officials and everybody in between on proper cybersecurity measures and programs. So there's been courses that have been sent out where employees and everybody can click on different links and be educated in terms of how to protect themselves and the infrastructure of the city when working online, opening emails, attachments, and so forth. Additionally, all the Wi-Fi antennas in the Community Service Department and the Public Works Department have been replaced and updated. So hopefully, as the weather gets better and people are outside more, increased coverage and flexibility on that end. And just to cap off IT, it is March break, and our IT Division Chief Terry is here running this meeting for us. He took time out of his busy holiday schedule, and we thank him extensively for all of his support and presence. With regards to urban planning, there were 13 permits issued this month, 21 permits historically year-to-date. Most impressive and important is this month, 139 inspections took place, year-to-date 242. So this time last year, 60 inspections were done, like I said, 139 this year. It just it's a it's an attestation to the extent of work that our urban planning department does, but also to the scope and the quantity of work that our residents are doing to make sure that permits are closed properly, followed up upon their being, you know, done according to code and so forth. So if you see our inspectors driving around in their cars, wave to them, say hello, and hopefully they only have good news for you and your projects. Otherwise, in Communications, we are continuing to work on our annual CSR guide for summer months. As Councilor Wigginsburg mentioned, there is going to be some, you know, different changes, and there's some things up in the air with regards to COVID. The annual, sorry, the quarterly newsletter is in the final stages of production, which you will receive shortly. New photos were taken for Instagram and Facebook, and archiving of old photos were done, and we continue to work on the eventual upgrading of the website, which is a real cross portfolio between IT Communications, which myself, Councilor Goldwax, and the mayor are deeply involved in. Otherwise, we continue to wish everybody the best, stay safe, stay healthy, and to all the youth in our community, please do your part, stay safe, wash your hands, put on your masks, and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buttoning.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I want to just say before, with all due respect, Councilor Schaefer, to answer the question on your about the the sites, when you punch in the H3X postal code, 11 different sites come up on the Click Sante that you could choose from. So people, there's a wide gamut of sites that they can, physical sites that they can go to to get vaccinated. So there's 11. By punching in our postal code, they have 11 choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schaefer. You have to unmute yourself. And and I think Councilor Schaefer is going to tell us about public security and legal. I think. But we're waiting.
He turned off his camera instead of turning off the mic.
So far, this live meeting is working really well.
So while we're waiting, can I read the names of the sites while these words comes on? So the Buildurna Marina, the Carrie Square, Jewish General Hospital, MUHC Glensite, the CLSC Metro on the Maisonneuve, the CLE Park Extension on Hutchinson, the MUHC, the Montreal General, Palais de Congrès, as Harvey Schaefer talked about, and Palais de Congrès has multiple sites actually, and then Huntington.
Councilor Goldwax, just a quick question for you. Is there anything that you can recommend to residents? Because as the temperature fluctuates and there's pooling in front of their homes, all in all seriousness, is there anything that residents can be doing to mitigate that situation and make sure it's not as dangerous until our Public Works gets around to Salton?
Well, what I do, I do take the matter in my own hand. I do break up the icings in front, and I do create a little channel to my to to either either side, so it helps to flow down to the drain, which is either, you know, a couple of houses away from me. I try and I try and do that as much as possible. Water itself also tends to make that trench as well, so eventually will work its way through as the water warms up or will work its way through with gravity towards a drain. But again, residents can channel a little bit against the sidewalk, and it will it will help the situation. But any bad situation, like there was one this weekend on Queen Mary, and I was there with public security, we are making note of it and dealing with it on at a public works level.
I'm guessing that somebody is trying to get Councilor Schaefer.
I'm open.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add one additional comment as to what Councilor Goldwax stated. The reason why I mentioned Palais de Congrès is because they have probably the largest capacity, and that's why they can they could probably administer the injection as quickly as 48 hours in the time you apply. That's I have personal knowledge of that.
Okay. So now, Councilor Schaefer.
Now, I will deal with my my two portfolios, one of which is legal, and I'd like to thank our clerk, Pierre Tap, for his report, and I'll read it as follows. During this period, we had one assembly of the municipal council on February 1, 2021. The council meeting was held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at Town Hall. We received several phone calls as well as emails from citizens, and we tried to respond quickly and efficiently to any of these requests. Very few claims during this particular period. As president of elections, the clerk had to respond to certain citizens on the upcoming election in November 2021. In this regard, we have studied the new bill relating to the holding of municipal elections in this special period of the pandemic. We also had several exchanges with the clerks of other cities regarding the organization of these elections. Despite the many difficulties, we are confident that everything will go very well. We follow the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We still discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding this delicate situation, and we are in contact with the clerks of other cities, and we share important logistics information. We attended a meeting of the clerks of the various demurred towns, and we discussed many important topics for our towns, more specifically about the insurance portfolio and the coming general election. We had a virtual hearing before the Access to Information Commission regarding a citizen's challenge to an answer we had given. The file is now closed to the satisfaction of all parties. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from the various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference, or direct calls. More particularly, we have been in daily contact with the head of many of our departments to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. We worked in collaboration on the development of the agenda for all January council meeting and its follow-up. The court being in slow motion, I can attest with my personal knowledge, that's very true. As for the past months, the majority of our litigation files have not changed in recent times. We are in constant contact with our lawyers on these different cases. The status document for each of our files is revised weekly and is included in this monthly report for the whole for the sole information of the members of the council. And that is Nature Tap's report, for which I thank you. I will now deal with public security. The report was prepared by Chief of Operations, Mike Fitzgerald, for whom I thank his, I'm glad to see he's back full-time now, and he prepared this report. First of all, he dealt with the issue of administration. The department is functioning as well as the COVID-19 situation is still ongoing. We have started to encourage the men to take some time off now that we are up to full strength. New vehicle is now equipped and operational, as well as the unmarked vehicle. The process for ordering a new Ford Patrol vehicle has been started. I should point out, in response to the question Mr. Mayor raised by Mr. Grossern, the type of vehicle that we require would be the size of a Ford Explorer. And I should point out, as Mr. Grossern probably would have noticed, the city of Mon, we were the leaders in first getting Ford Explorer police interceptors, and now we've gone one step further, going to hybrids. The city of Montreal have followed us, as have the provincial police, but to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any municipality or police organization throughout the province that have a fully electric vehicle, because, as you said, Mr. Mayor, a fully electric vehicle at this moment in time with with the equipment that's required to be installed in it is really not available at a reasonable price, if at all. Operational, there have been changes to the COVID-19 rules for the March break timeline. The curfew timings are still in effect. We will also be monitoring the Purim festival, which we did. And by the way, I've got to congratulate Chief Operations Officer Fitzgerald, as well as Brent Roberts. They did an excellent job. There was there was a great deal of Purim activity, both at the corner of Firdcroft and Dufferin, as well as in front of the MTC. And I'm told that there was Shalachmanas, meaning gifts given out, which is a practice at the time of Purim. 2,000 gifts were handed out to cars driving by in plastic bags containing such things as hamantaschen, candies, et cetera. So a great job by our public security. I received a telephone call from Lieutenant Roberts, told me everything went 100%, and everybody was happy and had a good time. Ongoing support between Public Works and public security in this regard to snow operations, it seems to be getting better every year. Pool inspections will be ready to go in April, May. The highlights of the month. Low number of crime, breaking and entering or thief of property may be attributed to the COVID restriction. A large crackdown concerning gardeners' work without permit has been successful and ongoing. The morale continues to be high, and preparations will will start soon for additional defensive courses as well. And that is the report from public security, and thank you for your time. I also want to reiterate what my fellow councillors have said. Please, fellow citizens, stay safe, wear masks, observe social distancing, and do whatever you can to help one another. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilor Schaefer. And at this point, we'll move on to the agenda. So item 5.0, adoption of minutes on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on February 1, 2021 are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. Brings us to, just give me a second to scroll through all these minutes. Okay, this is authorized the director general to sign on behalf of the town of Hampstead, a release in a court file concerning 177, 179 Dufferin. On motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the director general is mandated to sign on behalf of the town of Hampstead, a subrogatory discharge with the company 176530 Canada Inc. for the amount of $59,664.08, settling the said file. Anyone opposed? Okay, and for those of you listening and who don't know the legal terms of what it's all about, it simply means that the person was required to pay us that money, and we are now acknowledging that he paid in full. Okay, brings us to 7.2. Renewal of Hampstead's insurance portfolio on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
It is resolved that the town council approves the payment of $10,950.79 to BFL Canada Risk and Insurance Inc. for the renewal of the town of Hampstead's insurance portfolio for the year 2021, 2022. Anyone opposed? No. So that brings us to 8.1. I'll just announce that each member of council having received a copy, the town clerk deposits the minutes of the regular demolition committee meeting held on February 2, 2021. The council takes note of the positive said minutes by the town clerk. And moving on, 8.2. The minutes of the regular PAC meeting, each member of council having received a copy, the town clerk deposits minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on February 8, 2021, and of the special planning advisory committee meeting held on February 15, 2021. Council takes note of the positive said minutes by the town clerk. And that brings us to. 8.3, indeed. But since I'm paperless and doing it all on my iPad, it takes me a while to get to each item, because there's a lot of backup material.
Along the right-hand side, you have a little button that you can push, and it's much faster.
Thank you, I know, but it doesn't really help if you go too fast. Okay, this is dealing with 1 Heath Road. Motion of councillor. Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Buttoning.
Buttoning. It is resolved that the request authorized for said modifications of a semi-detached bi-family dwelling that will be converted into a single-family dwelling located 1 Heath Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8, 2021 is conditionally approved, as recommended by the PAC, provided that the junction between the neighbor, the neighbor's existing stucco and the new masonry is a crucial detail. The brick should be offset around one inch, one inch from the stucco finish. And two, the council, the color of the proposed concrete blocks above and under the entrance canopy roof must be darker to match the metal flashing. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and it partially meets the prescribed standards of and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try using the button on the side of the screen. Whoops, it goes too fast. 8.4, having to do with 23 Albert Road. On motion of councillor?
Wigginsburg.
Budnay, seconded by councillor Wigginsburg. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modifications of a detached bi-family dwelling that will be converted into a single-family dwelling located 23 Albert Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the urban planning department must verify the quality of the metal panels before issuing the permit. On the right side, the metal panel should be extended above the second-floor window up to the roof like the left-side second-floor window. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? That brings us to 8.7, I think. Did I skip something?
8.5.
Eight, yeah, eight, and you gotta go to 8.0.
8.5.
See what happens when I go so fast? Oops, okay, here we go. 8.5, 14 North Cove. Okay, there's a minor exemption. There were no, no communications comments on this minor exemption from the public. So, it is proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved that the request for minor exemptions of zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located 14 North Cove Road, law number 2089007, Zone RA1, is approved. Anyone opposed? No. And I will mention, for 14 North Cove Road, the council discussed this in caucus. We're not ready to approve the actual project, but we don't have an objection to the minor exemption. So that part is approved, but the project still remains to be approved. Brings us to 8.6, a request authorized an addition. This is 14 North Cove Road. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved that the request authorized an addition on the right and rear yard of semi-detached single-family dwelling located 14 North Cove Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, that's what I was saying. We are not approving the project yet, just the minor exemption. And that brings us to... Now we should be into 8.7.
6124 McDonald.
6124 McDonald. Okay. On motion of councillor?
Wigginsburg.
Budnay, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the request authorized an addition in the rear yard for a semi-detached bi-family dwelling located 6124 McDonald Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the proposed lateral setback of six feet from the detached property line is acceptable. The direction of the slope group must be changed to reduce the impact of the extension on the semi-detached house. The maximum line coverage ratio must be respected. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
No.
No, nobody's opposed. And that should bring us to...
8.8.
8.8, 17 Briardale. This is... Okay, a motion of councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modification for the detached single-family dwelling located 17 Briardale Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the decorative fibro-cement wall on the right-side ground-floor level must be modified. Only one dark color must be used. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed. That's adopted, and that brings us to 8.9, 188 Netherwood. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the request authorized facade modifications of a detached single-family dwelling located 188 Netherwood Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, and that brings us to 8.10, 157 Wexford. Okay, on motion of councillor? I'm sorry. Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modifications for a detached single-family dwelling located 157 Wexford Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that urban planning must verify the quality of the black metal siding before issuing the permit. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, and that brings us to 8.11, which concerns 42 Merchant Road. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modification for the, for a detached single-family dwelling located 42 Merchant Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
No.
No, okay, and that brings us to 8.12, concerning 5821 Ferncroft Road. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
I'm sorry.
Budnay. Seconded by Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modifications for a detached single-family dwelling located 5821 Ferncroft Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Nobody opposed, and that brings us to... 8.13, 15 Hawtham. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the request authorized the construction of a new detached single-family dwelling located 15 Hawtham Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on February 8th, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed, the proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody opposed, adopted. That brings us to...
814.
814, 30 Merchant Road. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
It is resolved that the request for facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located 30 Merchant Road and submitted to the, to the special planning advisory committee meeting on February 15th, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Nobody opposed, and that brings us to...
8.15.
Concerning 54 Heath Place. Okay. Okay, on motion of councillor? Councillor? Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy. It is resolved that the request for an addition on top of the second floor for a detached single-family dwelling located 54 Heath Place and submitted to the special planning advisory committee meeting on February 15th, 2021 is deferred, and this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to refuse. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that is adopted. The item will come back.
It strikes me that nobody's happy with their homes.
I'm sorry?
It strikes me that nobody is happy with their homes. Everybody is changing something.
Everyone is, everyone is home with, with, with this pandemic. Everyone is doing work in their house.
All the improvements.
It's okay.
Okay, councillors, have to keep moving. But I do agree with councillor Goldwax. That's exactly what's happening. It's not just in Hampstead, all over. People are doing all kinds of things because of COVID, and one of those things, at least if they can afford it, is changing their homes somewhat. Okay, 8.16 is 47 Bell Size Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I lost you. I'm so sorry. The 8.8.15, it was a deferral, right?
Yes, yes.
Because I hear you cut. I don't know, for some reason, I don't have a good connection.
It was deferred.
It's deferred, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think you're talking about 54, 54 Heath Place deferred. Okay, now we're at 8.16, and that's 17 Bell Size Road. On motion of councillor?
47.
Sorry, 47, 47 Bell Size Road. On motion of councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the request authorized facade and landscape modifications for a detached single-family dwelling located 47 Bell Size Road and submitted to the special planning advisory committee meeting on February 15th, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2, and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. I will mention that we're approving this. There are some minor exemptions that go along with this, but they were not dealt with by the PAC in time for us to deal with it this meeting. It'll be dealt with next meeting. Okay, and that brings us to 8.17, 22 Colchester. This is minor exemptions. There were no interested people who contacted us.
These are also just legalizing existing situations in their building. It's from inception.
Okay, so it was proposed by councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor?
Bigwax. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Schaefer, Schaefer.
Schaefer. And resolved that the request for the four minor exemptions for the property located at 22 Colchester Road, law number 2089922, Zone RA2, is approved. Anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed, and that brings us to 8.18 that was just added tonight, and which is not in my package here, I don't think.
Oh, it's on your email.
No, it's not, okay. So I have it here. I just have to find it. Here it is. Give me one second. Okay. This is concerning 11 Merchant Crescent. There were no, it's minor exemptions. There were no interested parties that sent us anything. So, it is proposed by councillor?
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved that the request for the two minor exemptions for the property located 11 Merchant Crescent, law number 2088876, Zone RA1, is accepted, and this notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted, and I will mention that there is a third minor exemption that unfortunately did not get into, get in time for us to deal with it tonight. We'll deal with it in April. But I think these are the two minor exemptions that the homeowner is most concerned about, so they have just passed. Okay, that brings us to 9.1, approval of the disbursements for the month of February. On motion of councillor?
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the disbursements for the period from January 16th, 2021 to February 15th, 2021, in the total amount of $2,521,279.67, are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted.
Just to note that the high amount is because we're paying down debt this month.
Okay, thank you for that. 9.2. Payment of the first installment of the town of Hampstead's share of the Montreal Voloration 2021 annual expenses. On motion of councillor?
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the town of Hampstead pays the first installment dated June 1st, 2021 in the amount of $5,687,652 for its share of the expenses in the 2021 operations of the Montreal Voloration. That treasurer's certificate number 21-1 dated February 1st, 2021 has been issued by the town's treasurer attesting to the availability of funds to cover the described expenses. Anyone opposed?
But we're paying it in June, correct?
Yes, I was just about to say that. We're paying it for June 1st. We're not paying it now. We're just passing the resolution now. Trust me, we're not paying anything faster than we have to. Okay. 9.3. Payment of the first installment of the town of Hampstead's share to the CMM for 2021. On motion of councillor?
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor?
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the town of Hampstead pays the first installment dated March 15th, 2021 in the amount of $116,296 for their share of the expenses of the 2021 operations of the Montreal Metropolitan Community. And that treasurer's certificate number 2102 dated February 1st, 2021 has been issued by the town's treasurer attesting to the availability of funds to cover the described expenses. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed. That's adopted. We are paying that sooner, but at least it's a much smaller amount of money. 9.4, having to do with transfer of funds on... 9.4, having to transfer funds, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor. Schaefer, it is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds for an amount of $12,960 from the available balance of the closed loan bylaw 803 GL number 51593000000 for the payment of the 2021 capital and interest debt payments of the aforementioned bylaw. Anyone opposed? Nope, brings us 9.5, another transfer of funds, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table in the amount of $1,623,200 from the unappropriate surplus to appropriate surplus account number 5599200000. And the amounts for different things, okay. Public Security Vehicle Replacement Fund, $43,500. Public Works Dump Truck, $94,500. Concrete and Asphalt Saw, $42,000. Hydraulic vibrating plate, $36,800. Building renovations, $136,500. Garage stockroom, $10,600. Information and Technology Software, $87,700. Hardware Network Performance and Security, $10,800. Website development, $50,000. And municipal elections for the election fund, $25,000. CSR, Hampstead Park Equipment Upgrade, $12,900. Hampstead Pool and Splash Park renovation, $7,900. Urban planning archives document scanning, $20,000. Town identification trees, $71,800. Infrastructure road rehabilitation, $900,000. Sewer assessment, $73,500. And anyone opposed?
Just to note that this is a new format, this is the PTI fund, and so this is a new format where we're basically doing it all in one shot, and it's easier for finance from an accounting point of view and a bookkeeping point of view.
Yes, and that is true, and it still doesn't mean that we will necessarily spend all that money. We have approved those expenses, but all kinds of things can get in the way, so the money's there. We'll spend it if we get proper tenders and everything works out the way we want to, wanted to, okay. Another transfer, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table in the amount of $28,638 from the unappropriate surplus to the appropriate surplus account 5599200000. And the, from 2019-032, $9,410. From 2020-306, $19,228. Anyone opposed? No, nobody opposed. 9.7, another transfer, we're taking care of all our bookkeeping tonight. So, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds in the amount of $597,300 from the unappropriate surplus to appropriate surplus account 559920000. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody, 9.8, yet another transfer. So, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Schaefer.
Second, okay, Eddy, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the town council approved the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table for an amount of $973,422 from the appropriate surplus account number 559920000 to cover expenses recorded in the 2020 fiscal period. And this is broken down as follows. For infrastructure road rehabilitation, $319,357. Sidewalk rehabilitation, $175,811. Information technology for my Hampstead, $39,775. New query software, $26,300. Cloud storage, $632. Public Works, three sidewalk tractors, $286,558. And a greater, $94,489. And for CSR, a Ford Ranger pickup, $3,500. Anyone opposed?
Just to, no, but just to note, this is for last year's PTI.
Okay, thank you, anyone opposed? No, okay. Okay, authorization of the payment of the invoice, on motion of councillor. Councillor.
Goldwax, Goldwax. Seconded, Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved to authorize the payment of the $32,997.83 invoice to group Altus for the feasibility study and estimate of additional tax income with regards to the redevelopment of the corridor of Coates St Luke Road. Anyone opposed? Okay, that brings us to 10.1.
I do, I do just want to say, I mean, that was supposed to be a $23,000, $24,000 file, and that came up to $32,000. That being said, you know, $33,000, apologies. That being said, you know, I believe in honoring our obligations, we already contracted the report and received it from Altus, so obviously we pay our bills, we're good, we're good corporate citizens like that. But it just goes to show how quickly things can get out of hand when not Altus gets involved.
We're aware, we are certainly aware of that.
Also, I can make one note, the numbers that I estimated are spot on with their numbers, just to note. With regards to tax revenue.
Fine, I'm sure you can back that up with something somewhere, but, but that's fine, that's good. Okay.
They were, they were, they were spot on, his numbers, just, just for the fun of it, they were extremely close, and councillor Eddy did a whole financial analysis for us, and then it was said we can't rely on that. So, just goes to show we need to trust the expertise we have in-house once in a while, too.
Absolutely.
And, fine. Okay, where am I, resolution 10.1, granting of a contract, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it was resolved that the contract for supply of asphalt for the year 2021 be entered as hereby approved. The whole is more amply delineated hereunder that according to the frequency of orders placed during previous years and the projected needs for 2021, the estimated amount of expenditure is $19,000 plus applicable taxes. It's going to construction DJL, different types of asphalt, 83, well, for EC5 asphalt, $83 per metric ton, CH10, $89.25 per metric ton, EB10, $80.25 for metric ton, EB10S, $78.75 per metric ton, EB14, $78 per metric ton. Taxes are, anyone opposed?
No, I just want to make a comment, I want to congratulate Michel Richard with his negotiating and purchasing. The quote submitted by DJL is actually on average between 12, 12 to 17% cheaper than what we paid in 2020. So, congratulations to Michel Richard on his purchasing ability, so thank you.
Yes, I share those thanks. Okay, so that brings us to 10.2, purchase of a Ford.
No, it's a Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Hybrid.
Yes, Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Hybrid, thank you councillor Schaefer. So, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, it was resolved that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is more amply delineated hereunder, it goes to Charles Olivier Ford Inc., it's $50,283. Tire tax, GST and QST are applicable only above price, anyone opposed? Okay, and that brings us to 10.3. Authorization for sale of a bunch of vehicles and equipment, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It was resolved that the Director of Material Resources and Information Systems, with the approval of the Director General, is authorized to sell the items listed below. 2004 street boom, I don't think we have to read the exact numbers of that.
It's a street sweeper, actually, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, and 2013 caravan, a 1986 GMC Cube truck, 2009 Ford Ranger, 2008 Ford Ranger, 2006 sidewalk salt spreader, 60-inch, I guess, white snowplow, and a 40-foot storage container. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's adopted. Okay, what's next?
10.4, the renewal contract of Instaloom.
Whoops, 10.4, yeah, electrician. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor. Seconded by councillor.
Somebody?
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. It is resolved that the contract with Instaloom Inc. for the maintenance and repair of streetlights and electrical installations is renewed for the second optional renewal for the period from May 1, 2021 to April 30, 2022, if the rates outlined below. For one electrician, $61.76 per hour. For one electrician and one apprentice, $72.23 per hour. The fee for uses of a cherry picker is $17.80 per hour. And according to the frequency in one diesel work done during the first renewal option, the estimated expenditure will be $88,000, taxes included, anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's adopted, and that brings us to 10.5. A renewal of another contract with Sannivac, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, it was resolved that the contract with Sannivac 93639888, Quebec Inc. for the cleaning of catch basins be renewed for the second optional renewal for 2021 at the cost of $13,905.73 plus taxes, anyone opposed?
No, but again, I just want to comment, for $14,000, including taxes, with the quantity of catch basins that need to be suctioned out by this, by, by equipment and cleaned out every year, again, I think this is an excellent price, and again, I thank Michel Richard for his hard work on, on finding these, negotiating these good contracts.
Yes, I agree, and I also note that there's two contracts in a row where we don't just go out for one year, we go out for a second year optional, our option, which helps keep prices down. 10.6, granting of a contract for the rebuilding of the Volga Greater Final Drive, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor. Seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, it was resolved that the contract for rebuilding the Volga Greater Final Drive be granted to Service to Transmission Express at the cost of $48,748 plus applicable taxes, anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed, it's adopted, I know there are some councillors who are probably grumbling, but we've had a long meeting discussing that issue, and we feel there's really no choice here. Okay, and that brings us to...
10.7.
Yeah, 10.7, I have to get to it, oops.
Page 613.
Right, 10.7, dealing with participation in a group purchasing deal. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it was resolved that the Town of Hampstead be authorized to participate in group purchasing with the Centre d'Acquisition Governmentale, a Dolphin Structures, Infrastructures, Technologie, Quebec, and other participating governmental organizations. The Director of Material Resources be appointed as a sole reference for the Town of Hampstead for the first set of group purchasing, and that it consequently be authorized to provide any information related to the needs and quantities required by the Town of Hampstead to that center for the products concerned by a collective tendering, any other relevant information in order to comply with master agreements, anyone opposed?
No.
No, 11.1, renewal of group insurance, group insurance contract. It was proposed by councillor.
Budne.
Budne, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, and resolved that the conditions for renewal of the group insurance contract proposed by the insurer La Capita for the period April 1, 2021 to March 31, 2022 for an amount not exceeding $231,957, including taxes, are approved by the town council. The Director General is authorized to sign on behalf of the Town of Hampstead. Any documents required for the above purposes, anyone opposed? No, and that brings us to, oops, 11.2. Which I think is our final resolution, approval of the hiring list of white collar student employees, it was proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, and resolved that the town council approves the hiring of white collar student employees as detailed on the list from the Community Services and Recreation Department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local 429 and the Town of Hampstead, anyone opposed?
Yes, Leonel Fassi is opposing.
Okay, councillor Fassi, so passed on division, passed on division, with councillor Fassi opposed, okay.
How come, councillor Fassi, how come you're opposing?
I think... We had, I answered, I answered, I can answer, we had that discussion before. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, it's up to you to answer if you wish.
I will answer, no problem. The main reason for my opposing this resolution is I always preach and push to hire our kids, Hampstead residents, and every year, I've been looking at that item very closely. And same with this year, this year we have 17 new hirery that all of them are returning, and only three out of 17 are Hampstead resident. I wanted to see all the applicants, so I can see who was refused and how many of them from Hampstead were refused. Until such a time that I don't see that document, I'll continue to refuse.
Okay, that's fine, all right, we finished the regular agenda, would someone like to propose a move with German?
We've got other business, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And then second question. Or second question period. Period. So, there are two questions, Mr. Mayor, that came up, I don't know if you see them.
I see the questions, I'm okay this time, so no other business now, the two questions, so. From anonymous, anonymous is back. What type of residence are planned alongside the Public Works project? I assume it would be townhouses or condos, approximately how many units are planned? Or, if it is too early to know these numbers, is no one wants square areas involved in the new planned residence? Well, yes, I do have answers for you. The tender document, the request for proposals, we are hoping it'll long last, this has been a very long ordeal. We hope it'll go out within the next two months, I hope. And in that document, it will require a minimum of six units, a maximum of 10 units. The building will look like townhouses, but technically they're called condos, but it'll look like townhouses, and when you go in, it'll either be six regular townhouses or another possibility, up to the person who bids, would be maybe 10 condo units, and it's hard to describe it without a diagram, but from the outside, it's going to look basically like townhouses. On the inside, it'll be six townhouses, as you imagine. of townhouses as you imagine them, or it could be ten things that you would consider more condos. Um, and that's, that's the best I can describe it. The area, I don't have the exact square footage, but basically you just have to look at our Public Works yard and the area that is being sold goes from basically uh, uh, just to the, as you're facing it, just to the right of the circle of the end of Dufferin. Um, and continues to uh, McDonald. Uh, we are not eating up any of the uh, park that's over there. It's strictly that part of the Public Works yard. That's what's going to be developed. Um, on the other side, the Public Works yard is going to get another building. Um, a little bit will still be exposed to the elements, but most of it will be covered by a building which will um, have a second story mezzanine over part of it and part of it won't. We have to, the building has to be large enough to allow large vehicles to uh, go in and be stored there. Uh, so that, that's a bit of a summary of what that project is going to look like. Um, but of course, first somebody has to buy the land and we have to finish our request for proposal. It's very, very close to being completed. Um, so I hope within two months that'll go out and uh, we'll get bidders and we'll move ahead. Meantime, in parallel, uh, we are going to hire an architect uh, to design that Public Works building. Um, and uh, and basically both things are more or less happening at the same time. Okay, there's your long answer. And now let me just, okay, the other one just popped up. Uh, anonymous, perhaps the different anonymous. When will the public consultation period be for the redevelopment of buildings on Coates St. Luke Road? Uh, well, I can't tell you exactly when, but uh, I um, I can tell you that very shortly we'll put up a document on our website uh, with a list of all the steps, a few of which have been completed and many more that are still to come. Uh, which are um, all leading up to eventually the redevelopment of buildings on Coates St. Luke Road. At least I hope that's what it's leading up to. Um, so uh, there isn't an exact timeline for the most part, as you will see when we put up this document. I'll, I'll send it tonight or or, or tomorrow for translation and then it'll be put on our website. Um, but exact timing is impossible. There are too many things that have to happen. What you will see though is the order of steps, the various steps. Uh, uh, some of the steps uh, towards the bottom of the document uh, will have to be further defined as we get further along. But you'll certainly see uh, the, the steps uh, between now and uh, uh, possibly all the way up to the election or at least close to it. So you'll see a lot of steps, but exact times because there are legal delays, because council has to do certain things, uh. Uh, there, there are lots of reasons why there can't be precise times. But the order of the steps uh, that you will see, and it includes the public consultation uh, meeting. Um, it's actually uh, quite a few things still have to be done before we get to that public consultation meeting and that includes a survey of residents and that's in that list as well. So that's what's um, roughly happening and I wanna give credit to councillor Budnig who uh, pushed for this document. He pushed, he asked me if we could put it up and I said, yes, we can put it up. Um, and I wanted to wait until we first got all those uh, studies out. Um, and uh, and it might have gone up last week, but our communications office is on vacation uh, for this week. So uh, tomorrow I promise, tonight or tomorrow, I promise I'll send it to her and we will get this up on our website. Okay, uh, that seems to wrap all that up. Um, so uh, we've, uh, I think we, did we do the adjournment?
No. We'll do adjournment now.
So on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor. Goldwax, we're adjourned. Anyone opposed? Nobody. So we are adjourned for the benefit of the councillors, uh. Uh, please leave this meeting and rejoin us uh, with our continuation of our caucus meeting. So I thank, I thank everyone for, yeah, I thank everyone for coming, uh, watching, asking your questions. Um, and again, be safe, be well, and please follow all the guidelines. And that includes those of us who are getting vaccinated. You don't get full benefits of the vaccination for at least three weeks and even beyond that. We have to be responsible because we might still be carriers and we don't want to infect other people. So everyone vaccinated or not should be wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, you know the routine. Just do it. Thanks. Bye.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye, everyone.